I'd like to board Superbord's order, as always, with some of the public wisdom of the assignment. Why the way to the Supreme Court of the United States of America, the Republican Party just saying, "I'm not going to get caught in the middle of the good justice court." All right, thank you. We do have one, we do need to adopt an agenda. At this point, we've added and subtracted and amended this agenda pretty substantially. From what was advertised, I think we've gone from B, we've moved down to supplemental appropriations on the consent agenda. We got it for our four supplementals. One for the come up attorneys acquisition, electoral boards grant, EMS directors contract increase, and the EMS six radios for new ambulances. Also, if nobody has any real questions about it, is there any way we can move number seven to the consent agenda? There's no new information. Ms. Gordon's working on console replacements. You can get on out of here. If they have any agreement for that. Moving on down the list, we've got nine A, which is the discussion of CARE Act funding. We also have a B, nine B, which is a status of the ERP project. And then Ms. Hoffman wanted to talk about where we were at with the privilege of the nine C. Also, we do have a closed session on personnel and legal consultation. Anybody else have anything to add to this thing?
Mr. Chairman, I think I need to ask Mr. Gregg about the radio tower easements. Mr. Gregg, one of those easements in there concerned is, involves my kin, direct, close kin. So if we move it to consent agenda, or...
Do not move it to consent agenda, just leave it separate and then you can...
And I can abstain. So, okay.
We put it as a separate consent item, or a separate item, we'll call it, let's call the safety tower deal four C.
Sorry.
And then we can separate the vote on that.
Scott?
Give Ms. Gordon out here and we'll get back to work. Anybody else have anything to add? All right.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. I moved to accept agenda as amended.
Motion made, exactly. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, so the folks saying aye. I have the same thoughts. As always, we're gonna start with a public comment. I think that before we start a public comment, I'd like to make just a quick statement. I know there's folks here from, or the Kriegerville Swinging Bridge, or Superborders from when we heard about this, as said to VDOT, go back and figure this out. There's value to Madison County citizens. Obviously, based on this that was delivered, which is the... It's a, "By signing below us, we're keeping and continuing maintaining the two swinging bridges in Kriegerville, Madison County, Virginia." How many names are on this?
Over a thousand.
That's true. That is amazing. We see those. We all, I have personal recollection of seeing down there that parade, and everybody in the world here values that. So something, we put forward here and Ms. Shepherd here shortly, about which solutions you can come up with. Just wanted to throw that out there. I know it's going to be paid in the public to... Superbord wants to carry on these bridges. It's not at the top of my list, for sure. Public comments?
Yes, sir.
If you'd identify yourself...
Go ahead. My name is Jim Howe, and I was here two weeks ago speaking about the Kriegerville bridges with Renee, my wife, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. And it's great to hear your support for the bridges. So, thank you so much. I do want to, there are some additional information in the handout that I gave you today that I think is important that the Board see before VDOT gives their presentation. So, on the second page, there is a statement of the petition, which you just read. But it also tells, gives some data about the people who signed the petition. And I think it's really important because of those, about 1,020 signatures that we have, 72% of those were Madison County residents. So, I went through these and I tabbed everything. 25% are non-Madison County, Virginia residents. So, basically, about 97% of the people who signed this, Virginia residents who pay tax dollars to Virginia and to VDOT to maintain structures like this. 3% come from as far away as California and the rest of the country. It's an important asset to tourism in Madison County. And I think that was really nicely brought out, whether it's coincidence or fortuitous. The last issue of the Madison Eagle, on the front page, was an article about the billions of dollars that tourism brings to Madison County. And below it was an article about one of the great treasures in Madison County that brings tourists, that is under the chopping block potentially. So, it's really vital to preserve these. The third page, we can skip past. The fourth page, I think, is information that's really important for you to hear prior to VDOT's presentation. And the reason is, we have been in contact with VDOT with both Ms. Shepherd, as well as Mr. Anitchin, Nicole Pepper, who's in charge of bridges. And Ms. Shepherd has not been forthcoming at all with information about the bridges. Hopefully, we'll find out tonight what she might have in mind. But we asked for things like maintenance records, engineers' reports, what's wrong with the bridges. Because honestly, we don't want to do battle with VDOT or the Board of Supervisors. We would be happy to help VDOT in any way possible to keep these bridges. Everybody wants them. But we can't do that without information. So, since they would not release any information, we got an independent evaluation yesterday from a colleague at UVA, who is an expert in structures and failure analysis. And that's Professor Dana Elsie. I have a picture of his webpage on the fourth spot. And his main findings are four bulleted items on the right-hand side, which I'll read. This involves the Kriegerville Bridge, which is the older of the two. I think the one that's really seriously under consideration for potential demolition. The bridge's main structure needs repair. There is significant rust at the bases of the two vertical supports, and broken strands in some of the support cables. There is no imminent danger of failure. The vertical supports are in good shape and held in compression by the anchor cables, which are static and largely intact. Deterioration of the bridge will continue if these issues are not fixed, eventually making it unsafe. The structural problems above can be fixed, and the bridge life extended for many years by performing repairs, such as welding of the bases, replacement of cables, regular painting, et cetera. Now, a fifth item that I didn't have from Professor Elsie in time for this, is I asked him if he could give me a cost estimate on repairing the bridge. And he's working on a formal cost estimate. But I think this is really important because I asked Mr. Anitchin, VDOT, if we were to, if they were to take the bridge down and build a new ADA compliant bridge, could he give me any estimate of what the cost might be? And that estimate was clearly upwards of a million dollars. So, I can tell you that Professor Elsie said to repair the bridge and make it in great shape, which will last for many years, would probably be in order of magnitude less. So, $100,000. So, if VDOT wants to repair the bridge and maintain it, they can do it for far less than to take it down and replace it. Not only that, I can tell you this, all the people that signed that petition, they don't want some great big concrete bridge over the river, right? The Swinging Bridge is as beautiful as the Robinson River itself. It blends in with the natural beauty of the area, and that's why people love it. So, I think it's important that you have that information ahead of the VDOT presentation. I think that's a good place for me to stop. Thank you for your attention.
Other public comment?
My name is Bonnie Dixon, and I, can you hear me with the mask? And I feel responsibility for making a statement now because the strip of land at the end of the bridge belongs to my, is part of the property that we own. We have 17 acres, and it's parcel 902991. And there is a narrow strip of land that extends down to the bridge, which we've never actually cleared, but is very important to access to the property if you were ever to build another structure on the, on the original area. The access to the house we live in, which is here, would be very awkward to getting into this back part of the land. Although we've never cleared it and used it for access, it's important to me to remain part of and parcel of this land for anyone who owns it in the future. We've been paying taxes on that strip as 2191A with no actual acreage specified, probably because it may vary depending on high water. And I have never really seen a flooding problem down there. However, I am looking at it now in a different way and thinking I would really like to make it an attractive park-like area near the bridge. And I've spoken to another neighbor, Travis Meadows, about maintaining that and clearing out that area that's just adjacent to the bridge. There's a way that you can, when people wait in the river, there's a really low area along the bank. And you can tell that a lot of people have gone up onto the bank. And it looks to me like it's sort of a natural place to make a little area from where people are going up onto the bank, over to the end of the bridge, clear it out, and make it a pleasant place, maybe plant native plants, and make it something that it would be fun to maintain for me, that everybody could enjoy. And I'd really much, I'd very much like to do that. And I've also talked to other neighbors who said they would gladly help maintain an area like that. I just wanted to put that out there as part of the whole situation. Thank you.
Other public comment? And then previous raised the question. Any other comment?
Totally different matter here. Hi, my name is Linda Wernick. I live at 159 Jack Shop Road. We're here regarding the letter we received from Brian Gordon concerning our, our street address for the 911. We have had four drives since 2000. A new home is being put in and called attention to the error Madison had overlooked in the past. We have lived here for 20 years. My husband built the house next door for his parents. They had a VDOT-approved driveway going directly onto Jack Shop Road. Betty Grayson randomly made them move it onto the, onto the right of way at their costly expense and time. She threatened to not give them a certificate of occupancy if not complied, which they did. Now, 18 years later, they want to change our address. The 911 law was enacted in 2002. My husband started his business in 2005. They had plenty of time to rectify it. This would be a big burden for all of us, costly, changing deeds, LLC, real IDs, passports, dot, dot, dot. My mother-in-law, who still lives next door, is 98 years old. You're going to make her change everything? We love our address, and our road is a simple road. We're just a quarter mile off on 29. The top two driveways are about 20 feet from the main road. There's an apron up at the top there. Our homes are very easy to find. We are proposing you grandfather this in. We would all get big reflective numbers. We dealt with a lot of harassment when we moved here. All of it is documented. Now is a chance for you to make amends and be compassionate to us. Thank you. And there is one other little thing here. On another note, so there's a fifth home going in now. We don't understand with this four-on-one law that you have, why they would be allowing this, and why they gave them an easement to that. Why we weren't notified of it. We just don't understand how they were, they were given permission to get an easement for that. It looks like they made an exception, making it five, when it was supposed to be the four-on-one law, which was in place prior to them getting an easement, which was in 1990. And we were never notified of any of this. Thank you. And if anybody wants to drive down our road, I would love it, to see the circumstances.
All right. Before we go to the bridges, we knew, like, sorry, yes, sir.
My name is Marty McGetrick. I'm a longtime resident of Kriegerville, some 45 years. And I don't mean to be repetitive, but I did send a letter to the Board in support of maintaining the Kriegerville Bridge. Because my recollection is, I'm not sure where I got this information, was that one of the main functions of that bridge was to provide safe passage during high water. I don't know how many of you have been up there, but there is what they call a low, low ward. And I can tell you, this year, many times, water's been high. And so, as I point out on my letter, there's a safety issue here as well, keeping in mind that local people know about the force of Robinson, but out-of-town people don't. We've had a number of tragedies in the years that I've lived there, people who just made a wrong choice. And by eliminating the bridge or not maintaining it, keeping it closed, I think you raise the risk, once again, of something untoward happening there. So, I, that is in my letter, and, but I just wanted to bring that up. Also, at some point, maybe not this meeting, I'm a lawyer, but I don't fully understand the decision-making process on this issue. I don't know who makes the final call. I realize that VDOT has made this proposal to the Board, and they're gonna make, I guess this is a formal report tonight. And I assume there'll be like an open meeting at some point for discussion of it. But I don't know what happens after that. If the Board says it has to be maintained, what happens then? Is it VDOT's call, saying they don't have the money, or what? I don't know. And you don't have to get into that now, but at some point, I think, I know I would like to know, and I have some others who have an interest in this decision, would like to know as well. Thank you.
I'm ready to move on to the other.
I mean, it's ultimately VDOT's determination. Have VDOT determined that they do not want to support it?
It's, it's VDOT's ultimate determination. But if VDOT does not want to support it, then it falls to us, and we have to figure out something to do.
Who pays for it then?
Either what?
Was that right?
Yeah. That's one of, I'm sure Ms. Shepherd will get into it.
Okay.
And different mechanisms of funding, and there's different costs of money that are assigned to districts and counties, and then we need to figure out.
You started about VDOT.
VDOT.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McGetrick, as far as tonight goes, there is another public comment period at the end of the meeting. So, if, based on what you hear from Ms. Shepherd in her presentation, if you feel so inclined, you can stay and comment on that at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Y'all want to take up some more, Ms., I'll call it out, Ms. Wernick? Is that right? Yeah, all right. Thank you. Brian, let me know, Greg, and Tom, and on this.
I would say from a subdivision standpoint, this subdivision has created a long time. I've talked, we had a nice conversation, talking about what's going on in particular. But as far as the building of the lot, that lot's in existence. It's on a lot of the right way. It's opposite of the use of it. They have these, the property, and they got built from there to be a much bigger sort of violation property rights, especially by the great blocks. And 30 years, they can't build them. It's been a lot sized now. They changed the driveway. There were other ones a few years ago that I've done some over-understandings in 2000. It was on Jack Shops. Jack Shop now it's on the right of way. I don't really know all the reason behind that. I mean, it's 20 feet. I don't think it's really, because I don't really, it doesn't bring them by. It didn't change the person's right-to-left house on the lot. Once their five people wanted a lot of addresses, like the foundation survey, didn't go to Brian to come and do, I do realize there's probably, I don't know if he has any flexibility. I know there's probably some rules and state codes, and I'm probably, pardon, none. Some of it is right. I've talked to her extensively. There's an issue with five people being on that driveway being moved. Move that driveway back. It's okay. You can move that back. It's under the case. It's fine. I mean, the, the room was supposed to be named 2002, 913. There was four of them. And this one is mother-in-law built, and they made that driveway, it should have been named that. I talked to my predecessor about it, the company that were using it back then, and said, failed to do that. For whatever reason, I'm doing my best to have them a fifth house that's built, that realizes that they're on, where it can be counted, based on county code.
I got, I've got a real dumb question. Why, why did they make them move the driveway?
Yeah, that I don't know. What was that done in 2002? Something like that. I really don't know why that was done, but that, there was lots of people. Oh, I think they've been there for 30 years, all that, all that pride.
We definitely, like I said, we were dealing with a lot of harassment. And Betty just did not like this father, this frotchy 80-year-old man. I mean, this is the truth.
A sensible issue.
And seemed to have an attitude. I mean, there's no other reason for it. When my husband, Richard, went down there to talk to them, she said that his father was a senile old man, and I wasn't. I mean, it really, I'm, you know, it is what it is. I mean, it's, it's in the past now, but they're the ones that created this with, with that driveway. The parents, it didn't survive at time. They wanted to be on the road. So, we put it, we put the car gate, and they moved it on the main road, and out of the blue. The other neighbor, she lives in the house now, wanted to harass and have them be part of the road maintenance agreement perhaps. But they didn't want to, they didn't want to be part of the chateau of his place.
All right. Well, that's another dumb question. They wanted to move their entrance back to the other side of Jack Shop, but that still forced them to make the road.
At this point, yes, because that four houses could be built. And even if you moved it back, you still have four houses on that main drive. I took pictures out there, and the two driveways that are first access off that main drive are about 20 feet in. It's really hard for me to say that comes out of Jack Shop.
Great day. Maybe the other ones too. There you go.
So, the top left picture is a picture looking straight in. Ms. Wong's actually here as well. That woman on the right, in a bird ride. And then if you scroll down a little bit, the last picture there is Ms. Wernick's mother-in-law, between the two white fence posts. There are a lot of roads in Madison County named, with an exception for this, but I understand where they're coming from. I had a little long sub conversation with Ms. Wernick, and I understand exactly where they're coming from. It is a difficult thing to do when you're used. I've done a bunch of issues already. At the same time, I gotta kind of follow code. And also, from a law standpoint, being consistent is the thing.
Doesn't sound like, that point is correct.
Yeah, no, since we've got Brian, and Noah, and John, all here, just help educate me. So, right now, we've got 159, 129, 160, whatever. We got four mailboxes, soon to be five mailboxes, out at the driveway. So, if Noah, if you got a call and said, "Show up at 159 Jack Shop Road," you would go out there, and I guess your GIS would take you to that driveway. So, what's the difference in having a new name going down, when you're going in there, then, then pulling in that 169 Jack Shop Road, and then you see the different houses with their numbers on it? House, there's what? There's the important part.
And the driveway too. In other words, if you see a bunch of mailboxes?
Yeah.
Coming to a road, that really doesn't help us much more than a bunch of mailboxes. So, if there's a, if there's a person after driveway, that's, that's utopia. And I can elaborate a little bit. If, if, Jack Shop Road, 165 Jack Shop Road, fear of everything means that, that house is 1.6, 0.65 miles from the beginning. So, if we name that road, and it becomes 40X road, whatever you call it, then it's theoretically 0.4, 0.4 miles from the beginning of that one. So, if it responds, it's not ideal. If it's 125, theoretically, it's 1.125, 1.125 miles from the beginning. It just, it enhances the search a little bit. And most, most of the time, it's not going to be a big deal. When it, mainly it comes into effect, you got two different calls, et cetera.
Can you actually talk to me?
Sure.
See, the private drive is, is only a quarter mile long. It's very simple. You see everybody's driveways, and this is our other neighbor, and he would have, he puts a big reflective.
Local numbers.
Brian, is this county code or state code?
It's county code.
It's county code.
It's county code. We're actually, I'm actually naming one right now, because maybe I'll have adopted.
We're actually naming one right now because many of them have adopted next generation out there, mandate. I'd be a missed note somewhere along the line. I'm actually naming that.
I mean, I've sympathized with you all. Actually, it doesn't sound like a whole lot often to you. It is a mistake on our part for missing it in two thousand and two. It's unfortunate. I don't think people still get magazines. Just get some of the magazines. There are type things, buildings and everything that have to change. Which is a burden. I mean, the continuity seems to be important. Getting a person funded out there, just get fuel on that road. Well, it's hard for a person to fund if you get out there. They have a hard time. And exam is, in some cases, finding white sports fields at our own resource. And we have to name that out of there so that we can do that.
Would you be willing to just drag out there and look at the road?
Absolutely. I don't think it's a problem.
That's a simple road.
Well, my, my concern, another concern that I think should be considered, the road terminates at our neighbor's driveway. There is no turnaround. It's on, it goes around a pond with a very steep bank to the outside. As far as liability goes, that becomes a, you make that a public road, there are going to be a lot of curiosity speakers just headed down there to see what's down there.
Does it make it a public road? It's his name in private.
And it says private lane on the side.
You can certainly do that because there are several other counties that say that. Hey, one comes to mind, it's a fault of another. Understanding is maybe, I don't think.
Well, more than an inconvenience, it's a big expense. Wheels, deeds.
Yeah.
Deeds up to President Trump. Deeds, no, not to President. But bills, bills probably will.
License.
And we had the business there for fifteen years. The amount of paperwork is.
Anybody else got anything to say about that?
No.
All right, moving on. Any more public comment? Do you see any public comment on any of that, Livingston?
Yes, sir.
All right. Presentation, Ms. Shepherd from VDOT. Let's start with swinging bridges, Ms. Shepherd. I know you're on the Go to Meeting platform. Ms. Shepherd, the floor is empty.
She's still muted.
Yeah, still muted, Ms. Shepherd. Or Mr. Pierce, if you're available, also from VDOT. We take you either. Ah, Ms. Shepherd. We can't hear you. Hold on. Where, what we got going on there, Livingston?
Muted, but I'm going to send the unmuted.
I'll unmute your line, Ms. Shepherd, somehow. There you go. Now you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we got you. Go ahead there, Livingston. Or whoever's in charge of this. Do you have a presentation, Ms. Shepherd?
Do I not? You have a presentation.
Hold on. We're not. We're logging on. Ah, here we go. We're, we all got it. Hold on. Now you're going to be in class. All right, here was just shot the second, Ms. Shepherd. Hold on. All right, Pierce. All right, Ms. Shepherd, we got your presentation up. Go ahead, please.
You ready for me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all right. All right, well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Carrie Shepherd, resident engineer for the Charlottesville residency. Tonight, I'm here with you to discuss the two swinging bridges in Kriegersville. As for what I plan to cover tonight.
It's her mic.
I'm sorry.
Can you get any louder on your end because I'm maxed out here?
It's quite high.
Let me try.
Yeah, there you go.
Hi, Ms. Shepherd. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. I'll try to talk loud. Can you hear me better?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So as for what I plan to cover tonight, I will start with the history and current condition of each bridge, then follow with replacement and funding options. Then I'll discuss access. And I can take any questions from the board at the end of the presentation. As you know, the pedestrian bridges are located in Kriegersville in northwest Madison County. One is accessible by Route six forty-two Lindsey Lane, and the other is accessible by Route six seventy Old Blue Ridge Turnpike. For the bridge accessible by Lindsey Lane, it was built in nineteen forty-eight. Over the years, frequent damage from flood and storm events has led to extensive repairs and replacements. From a cultural resources and historical significance standpoint, a survey of all the suspension bridges in the state was performed in the early two thousands by a group called the Historic Structures Task Group. This group includes membership from the Virginia Transportation Research Council, VDOT, the Department of Historic Resources, and the Federal Highways Administration. After the survey was complete, the group determined that none of the state-owned suspension bridges were eligible for the National Register. The Department of Historic Resources accepted this conclusion. Some of the factors that led to this outcome include the fact that the, that only a few standard construction plans were used for these bridges. Or in other words, they're common designs. Another factor is that due to construction technologies and frequent damage from flood and storm events, extensive repairs to and replacements of bridge elements, including rebuilding, are common. And this results in a loss of structural and historical integrity from a cultural resource point of view. And last, there is a fifty-year age requirement to be eligible for the National Register. And although this bridge meets that age, the frequent damage requiring significant repairs and replacement of elements throughout the years makes this bridge ineligible for the National Register. The other bridge accessible by Old Blue Ridge Turnpike was completely rebuilt in nineteen eighty-seven after a flood damaged the previous bridge. In consideration of the factors I mentioned on the last slide, this bridge is not eligible for the National Register because it is newer than the fifty-year threshold. We'll move on to the current condition of the bridges. Earlier this month, myself, our bridge inspectors, and bridge engineers made a field visit to both bridges. While we were reviewing the structure on Lindsey Lane, we discussed the decay, rot, and cracking in the deck timbers as well as the deterioration of structural members and safety features, including the fencing on both sides. We also looked at the fraying and corrosion of the bridge's support cables. And because of these items, we deemed the bridge as unsafe and closed the bridge the next day. Unfortunately, the amount of work required to reopen this bridge as far as maintenance is concerned, is impractical. All of the critical elements are corroded and deteriorated. So from a funding standpoint, but more importantly, a safety standpoint, replacement is necessary. During our review of the second bridge accessible by Old Blue Ridge Turnpike, we discussed the cracking deck timbers and splitting of cross-members where the deck timbers attach. But the cable system appeared to be in decent condition. We replaced about thirty to forty deck boards the next day of maintenance, and the bridge remains open. However, over the next few years, we expect some of those additional components to require repair. In the case of this bridge, we do think it is possible to replace these components without necessarily a complete replacement. But we do not know for sure at this point. In particular to the bridge we recently closed, I want to talk through some replacement options to consider. We can replace in kind with a swinging bridge, and we estimate that to cost about one and a half to two and a half million dollars. To replace with a prefabricated truss, we estimate a lower cost at around one to one and a half million dollars. An example of a truss is shown in the picture at the bottom. Or if you've visited White Oak Canyon Falls in Madison, there's a pedestrian bridge that is similar to this type. And finally, the option to abandon the bridge and remove it is shown, which would cost approximately one hundred thousand dollars. I have a few follow-up notes to these estimates. This estimate is per bridge, not for both of them combined. And we developed these estimates as if it were a VDOT-administered project. If it's locally administered, the county may be able to acquire engineering services at a lesser cost. We did not consider right-of-way acquisitions since donations from the local landowners are likely needed for a replacement project, which I will cover in just a few minutes. These estimates include preliminary engineering that would be needed, so survey, hydraulic analysis, geotechnical analysis, as well as the cost for the actual construction. We did review other alternatives to these, but these were found not viable because of the estimated cost, length of the bridges, and the required opening needed for the river. Next, I'll move on to some funding options to consider. I'll first cover the programs that qualify. So first, we have the Transportation Alternative Program. This program is eighty percent federal funding with a twenty percent local match. It's allocated every other year. Projects can be locally or VDOT-administered, but the projects are applied for by the locality with VDOT's assistance as needed. And they're scored as a means to guide the CTP members who do the project selection. The next round of date for this type of funding is a pre-application deadline in July one, twenty twenty-one, with a full application deadline of October first, twenty twenty-one. And then projects that are selected will be given funding in June of twenty twenty-two. Next, I've included the secondary six-year plan funds, specifically talking about the county's telefees. And these can be leveraged as the twenty percent match for the Transportation Alternatives Program that I first mentioned. However, they cannot be used to match in revenue sharing. Currently, the telefees in Madison are about forty thousand dollars a year. So it's a relatively small amount, but these funds are available for consideration. And jumping back up one, I skipped revenue sharing. It's very similar to the Transportation Alternatives Program. It's also applied for by the locality on a, on a, every other year basis, similar to TAP, but it is a fifty-fifty match of funds. So the county would have to come up with a fifty percent locality match, whereas TAP was the twenty percent. And then moving towards the bottom of the screen, we did investigate a funding program from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. But unfortunately, these funds are specifically for recreational trails. So the Madison pedestrian bridges do not qualify. Maintenance funds could apply to the, to the bridge that is still open that requires maintenance, Old Blue Ridge Turnpike. But it would not qualify for the bridge that we've recently closed accessible by Lindsey Lane. These funds are specifically for routine maintenance, not a full replacement. And last, as part of the six-year plan fund, the State of Good Repair Bridge Fund is specifically applied to structurally deficient and national bridge inventoried structures. So this would not qualify because they are specifically for structures carrying highway traffic and not a pedestrian bridge. Moving on to access across the river, I've shown the location of the bridges with red stars on the map. Also shown is three other access points to cross the river. One by Route six forty-nine, one by Route six forty-two, and the third by Route two thirty-one. A second consideration to discuss is our legal rights to access the bridges. A review of the property plaque indicates that we do not have prescriptive easement or designated right-of-way to access either bridge. The plaque showing the bridge on Lindsey Lane is shown at the bottom-left corner. A prescriptive easement follows the low-water bridge on Lindsey Lane, but there is no conveyance for the spring, for the swinging bridge. The plaque showing the bridge off Old Blue Ridge Turnpike is shown on the right side of the screen. The bottom shows a close-up of the area containing the bridge, and there is no easement or dedication. We are currently in discussion with the Attorney General's Office to determine which options are available to us, what we can do within our legal rights. And so there are still some unanswered questions about this topic. But we are continuing to work with the Attorney General's Office in the county to determine how we can move forward. To conclude, the structure accessible by Lindsey Lane has been closed for safety reasons, while the structure accessible by Old Blue Ridge Turnpike remains open today. The discussion about our legal rights to access the bridges continues with the Attorney General's Office. And VDOT, we seek county input for the path forward, and we will work with the county to pursue whichever option is decided. And at this point, I will take any questions.
All right. Thank you. Who would like to start a question?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple. Ms. Shepherd, this is Cardi Yow. I would like to see some maintenance records over the last ten years or so. So with respect to nine double oh four one, so do you, does VDOT plan to maintain that bridge? Number one. And if both of these bridges have been routinely maintained, would we be in this situation?
So to answer your first question, we feel like the maintenance that we just performed at the beginning of the month is enough to last the bridge for another year and a half. Or, I mean, sorry, one to two years before we're going to have to start looking at other options. And other items are going to become in a more critical state. We do plan to continue to maintain that at this time. And as far as the routine maintenance costs, I don't have those available to me now. So I can't really speak to how or the extent of how they were maintained through the years and if it would have prevented us being here. I do know that the one we closed, it was, it's really, in certain places, the foundation, the towers, and the actual suspension cables, it's more of corrosion of steel than anything else. So I'm not sure how we could have prevented the corrosion. I do have David Pierce, our district bridge engineer, on the line. And I don't know, David, if you have anything to add.
No. Well, what I will add is these bridges are inspected as required by FHWA on a regular basis. After every inspection, we have an engineer that reviews the inspection reports. And we do necessary repairs to keep it functioning. One of the unique things with these bridges compared to a lot of our highway bridges is a lot of the material, especially the decking, is wood. And over time, they, it decays, it splits, it cracks. The way that the deck timbers are nailed down to the floor beams continually work loose. So we're out there, have been out there on a pretty regular basis doing the routine type repairs. As Carrie said, the, when the cables start fraying, the cables start rusting. There's not a lot of maintenance you can really do to a cable, short of replacing it. When you get into the replacement option, then it's a lot of the things that she talked about before. Different things come into play as far as what funding types are available. If it has to be. if it has to be brought up to ADA compliance with the type of funding you use, so forth and so on. So there's a lot of things to consider. This is somewhat unique, something that we do not deal with every day, swinging bridges, pedestrian bridges. So we're working through a lot of the questions that you all have. We have some of the same questions, working with the Attorney General's Office. It was very important for us tonight to hear what the desire of the county is so that we don't spin our wheels looking at thirty different options. We can narrow it down and really start to do engineering to determine how to move forward. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, sir. I just want to reiterate, in my opinion, you know, we we have a unique tourist feature attraction here. In Kriglesville, we've got the Mountain Museum, we've got the Possum Store, we've got Graves Mountain Lodge, we've got the Kriglesville School, which we hope to see something done. We could put this on a tourist route. I mean, there is so many reasons why we need for for VDOT to assist us in in securing, you know, these these bridges. And I I would like to see some maintenance records. Just, I mean, if if routine maintenance is done, how did we get to closure? That's all I can say.
I mean, I think I think just to reiterate what David said, we do we do perform routine maintenance when we have our yearly inspections of the bridges. Again, I don't think certain components at this point in time, maintenance would would apply at this point. I think it's they're just they've just gotten too corroded and deteriorated. But we can look back through our our routine maintenance and help provide that information.
Yes, I just want to make sure you're aware of the sense of the room here that I think we understand that maybe we can squeeze a few more years out with maintenance and all that. But at some point, the bridge or bridges have to be replaced, and that's fine. But in my experience, the next step would be to do some sort of better detailed engineering study, a preliminary engineering report, a whole document, because we can't be applying for grants until we get good cost estimates and get a scope around what this would involve. Is there are there ways for VDOT to help with that, or are we on our own to figure that out?
I think I think at this point, we can perform some limited engineering and and cost development, which I which I hope I shared with you tonight as far as the cost development. There's there's few records for us to go to to develop a cost for swinging bridges. It's a unique situation, so we were doing, you know, the best that we could with the information we had. As far as a farther along preliminary engineering study or or planned development design, we would require funding to do that, but we can help you through the process to obtain that funding.
Thank you.
We have a petition, Ms. Shepherd, in front of us. The community, and this is probably just a portion of Mass County citizens that support these. Maybe assertion in the past that the bridge on Lindsay Lane is based on, not based on lack of use. I would say some of that deterioration is all on the side of it being used. Routinely, I got to be there and see people there, kids and families. And we talk about the tourism aspect of it, which is an important side. But Madison County citizens value that bridge. A million to a million and a half of the materials on that bridge seems a little bit off. And I just see that tied up in labor and engineering and hydrologists and all that. But all over the state, we're seeing pushes for pedestrian access. Madison has very limited pedestrian access, and this is one avenue that we have. I mean, is there not options out there where they're doing this up in Woodford, Daniel, putting in pedestrian stuff all over the place? VDOT has nothing to do with that funding of that. That's all locality type of funding?
I was having a little bit of trouble hearing, but I but I think I gathered your question. We we don't have access to, you know, privately built or independently built pedestrian bridges, so we're going off of the information that we have. And specifically swinging bridges, we have, you know, very little inventory to build upon. The estimates that we gave you are trying to capture what we know at this point would be required. Again, if the locality decided to pursue engineering services outside of VDOT, it's possible that it could be obtained at a lesser value than than what we've given you. And our hope is, is if we work through the process, of course, you know, that the price would go down, but we feel comfortable with the estimates we provided tonight.
But there are no funding streams that specifically go to pedestrian access?
Not not specifically, but the TAP funding, the Transportation Alternative funding would apply. The revenue sharing would apply. And specifically, in relation to the TAP funding, the twenty percent locality match, you can you can elect to use your secondary six-year plan fund as part of that match.
Ms. Shepherd, Cardi Yow again. In our packet is, I guess, some from the state code thirty-three dot two dash three twenty-five. I assume that came from you guys, certain school roads in secondary state highway system?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm I'm reading that, looking at it like, if if we have children on the other side of the of the river that need to use that bridge to come over and catch a school bus in front of the Possum Store, that that's a factor?
I don't believe so. I believe that code reference is specifically for routes, secondary routes that provide access to schools.
That's what I'm talking about, access to schools. Unfortunately, Kriglesville School is closed, but they have to get to the bus to get to school.
All right. Anybody else got any comments on this? What's that? I think that I think I can generally say that the Madison County Board of Citywide, which the citizens of Madison County want to keep these bridge. We need to figure out funding streams and engineering sides of that, I guess. Where do we need to go and what do we need to do on our side to get this process going?
Well, first of all, I appreciate that. That's exactly why we're here, because we are invested, committed to doing what the county would like to do and helping you through that process. So so I'm glad to hear that. And so what what we need to do next is discuss in more depth and determine determine the right funding mechanism that you would like to move forward with, and then we can help you through that process. Again, we're we're still working on our end to determine some access issues, specifically right-of-way with the Attorney General's Office. But we can definitely help you through the through the funding discussion to to determine which which way you decide is the right path forward.
And your proposal moving forward, though, is that we could not, even if we were to do a complete replacement of that bridge, it could not be a swinging bridge, is what you're saying? You're saying it needs to be a pedestrian bridge, it's either a truss, a pre-engineered truss, or whatever that other picture you had or other was?
No, I was just trying to give you some options to consider. The swinging bridge estimate, we we put at one one and a half to two and a half million dollars. And if it's decided that that's a feasible option, then by all means. But I just wanted to give you a lower-cost option in the prefabricated truss, and it might be more feasible and and maybe possibly a quicker solution. But I just wanted to give you some options to look at.
All right. Why don't you, why don't we move forward to just and send our county administrator the funding mechanisms and the direction, and we'll continue to work on this at our next meeting in two weeks, two or three weeks, and make a decision on the direction to go and where that funding is. We'd also like some type of, I mean, what it really looks like, the six-year plan is an actual eighteen-year plan. So if we start pulling funds from there, does that mean that we're going to have to accumulate all the funds prior to construction, which is just going to leave this bridge closed and deteriorate even further? You understand my question, Ms. Shepherd?
I did not realize you were asking me a question. I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
The six-year plan, to get a road to be fixed, takes several years, far more than six years. And the basis, the way that I understand it, is that you have to accumulate all the funds prior to construction commensum. If we go down and use some of those funds, we have to get all the money in place to start doing a replacement swinging bridge. And won't that cause a bridge that it's big signs on it to deteriorate further so that it's just perpetuating something that probably could have been taken care of with some routine maintenance moving back, like rust inhibitor and things?
So for the for the secondary six-year plan fund, you the forty thousand dollars I mentioned prior is outside of your rural rustic allocation. So that that would not be affected. The forty thousand is strictly telefees, and it's a yearly allotment. And as far, so I'll I'll use TAP as an example. If you were to apply for the TAP and the project was chosen, and you you would receive funds in 2022, you have four years to go to advertisement with that project. So however much money that you've accumulated from your telefees through those years could potentially be used toward your twenty percent county match.
Why don't we send some stuff to the county administrator on some funding mechanisms so that we can move and make some decisions on how we'd like to proceed from here? That's our reason. All right. That don't really do a whole lot. Sorry, folks. Next, we have other issues with VDOT, open issues with VDOT. Tom, you want to go into those?
Yes, I believe I shared this with Ms. Shepherd earlier, and it's on your screen here. This is a list of open VDOT items. I think we, the two big ones are the R-Cut project at Shelby Road, and then we our local current issue is the Roundabout at Pratt's. Carrie, are we still on track with the Shelby Road R-Cut?
Yeah, can you see my 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 screen still? I put up a second presentation for these these outstanding items. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so for the for the projects just mentioned, the twenty-nine and six fifty-two R-Cut at Shelby, it finished scoping. The next milestone will be preliminary field inspection with an add date of November of 2022. Two thirty-one at Fairgrounds Road, the Pratt's intersection, was just submitted for the current round of smart-scale funding. So then the scoring should be back early next year. And last, the seven oh seven Nethers Road is a bridge replacement. Last milestone was scoping. Next milestone would be preliminary field inspection with an add date of September of 2024. Your rural rustic update, six oh six Novum Road, should be complete at this time. Forest Drive, the scoping is in progress, as well as P Ridge Road, scoping is in progress. As far as outstanding traffic engineering studies, Route 634 Oak Park Road, this was a speed study, is complete. The results recommended increased police enforcement. Also currently underway is the eight-ten Dyke Road, Virginia scenic byway designation. We just heard back that DCR recommended approval, and we are currently discussing some final things with DCR before we proceed. And we will then continue on with the process, which will include a public hearing. Next is two thirty-one North Blue Ridge Turnpike. This was an intersection review at six seventy-three Cedar Hill Road. This is also complete. And although we determined that the intersection is at a at a strange angle, we did not have a crash history to support other improvements, and we recommend that the vegetation be maintained to improve those sightlines. And last, Route two thirty Orange Road, this was a passing zone review. It is also complete, and we have recommended no changes because the site distance in the passing zones is is in excess of the nine hundred feet that's required. And last, we have our maintenance update. There was a request for grading in gravel on six eighteen Waylands Mill Road. Last week, we graded and added gravel. And in the next month, on six forty-one Weaver Hollow Road, we are planning to install a forty-eight-inch pipe as an overflow to mitigate flooding and help in that in that area. And those were those are the items. I hope I captured everything. Are there any questions on on these?
Did you hear me, Ms. Shepherd?
Now I can.
Okay. I guess I'm just a little confused. There was no real changes made. I see that you guys went out and did studies, but determined that no changes should be made in any of these, the ones that we recommended?
Is there one in particular that you would like me to provide some more information?
Yeah, all of them look like nothing. There's no recommendations, increased police enforcement.
So I can start with six thirty-four Oak Park Road, the speed study. We collected speed data a quarter mile west of Route fifteen. The average speed was forty-eight miles per hour. The most recent three-year crash, so three crashes between fifteen and six thirty-two, all of which were property damage only, one rear-end collision, one road departure, and one is a non-collision. And the recommendation from traffic engineering was that close calls are difficult to analyze and mitigate. And reported crash history shows no clear indication of issues with intersecting roadways. And the speed data indicates there is a non-compliance with the speed limit on Oak Park Road, which may be mitigated by increased police enforcement, which which led to our our conclusion.
So actually, somebody watching has just brought up a point, and I guess we're making progress on some of those items. What about like vegetation? I know you all did it earlier in the year. But on Route two thirty-one on Cedar Hill Road, there's lots of vegetation issues coming out of the massive post office, the bank, those are both within the easement. Are you all still doing any of that, or is that over for the for the year?
We do it as as much as we can and when we see it. But but what does help is is definitely raising your concerns to us, and we can address them. So so we will definitely be out there. You said two thirty-one Cedar Hill Road, just along that route in general?
Yeah, Cedar Hill Road, doing that road's got some problems.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Pierce? How's the town sidewalk project going? You hear that, Ms. Shepherd? How's the town sidewalk project going with the grant that they're supposedly supposed to get?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry. I actually don't have an update on that tonight, but let me look into it, and I can get back to you.
All right. Um, anybody else got anything? Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. All right, moving on. Um, the bills, where are we at this time of year?
My understanding is it's ready to be reviewed by the board.
Right.
Um, that is correct. There are some details related to some insurance considerations.
Anybody have any questions on this? I guess the process will get to more detail. Consent agenda, uh, agenda, excuse me. Uh, we have a meeting from October thirteenth, and then we have four supplementals. Anybody have questions on these supplementals?
Sir, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, items A and B of the consent agenda.
But maybe in seconds, further discussion. Karen Dunn, all in favor, she pumps in a box, say aye.
Aye.
There's no sign. Um, next, we have four C, which is the consideration of public safety radio tower easements for your use of routes. Four, anything to add?
Just to give a little bit of a timeout, how this, uh, how this goes, the board chooses to approve the leases, how we go back to the landowners and let them come through it. Um, the negotiations have been done with those folks. They're not seeming in writing. Uh, once that is all done, DOF is involved with this. They need to see a copy of that lease and a written description of the right away before they can proceed. Uh, and then once we do that, then we'll be, we'll have, we need this, this op-.
Mr. Baron, any further comments on this one?
Um, other than to say, uh, we've reviewed the reasons and reviewed the programs. Appropriate action to be authorized, which I'm, who's, I'm, do you use my, so, um, I'm, I'm.
Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts? The element of.
Just four C, right?
Four C, yes.
I move to approve four C.
Uh, motion made in seconds, further discussion. Karen Dunn, all in favor, she pumps in aye.
Aye.
I approve same sign, you know, standing.
Yes, yes, Cardi is upstanding, yes.
Um, all right. A failed to, uh, commission earlier, Ms. Frye found a little silicon ring. If anybody's missing one, we have, uh, there you go. Um, committee vacancy for Ms. Frye.
Yes, we still need someone, we don't have anymore. You know, we just need one more spot. Um, Jerry's supposed to be here, he's supposed to be in December. He wouldn't rather put this on there, but it's just, I shouldn't hold the wall, um, through that, and then we can move on to much other items. Um, I'll put down here, um, the past one I did, uh, we roughly said twenty-two ninety-five per person. I recommend that the department be about to purchase with their sister's hand, uh, at per person cost, and if we, if we do the same thing, um, the, the, the staff say, we're gonna do A and somebody not do B. So, you all decide what you want to do, and we'll, we'll prepare. We can't do, but you do a group meal because of COVID, so we got to do the best we can to be next year thankful we got.
Do we want to follow through with Ms. Frye's suggestion?
I don't know what else to say.
What is suggested again, Ms. Frye?
And what we, what I was going to do would've been twenty-two ninety-five per person.
Yeah.
So I recommend that the department be about to spend at least a that amount for their department per person. It's gonna be about the same as what we would've paid for dinner anyway. Um, we couldn't do the gift cards, because we just, it wasn't a good tax attrator, and so, we didn't want to get taxes from that. So, um, can't do a full dinner because of COVID, so I think just let the departments do what they want to do, for that amount for her person, and take it from there.
So we can, so twenty-two ninety-five per person, per department, uh, give it to the government heads, and then they do what they want with it. Not buy a gift card, um, but buy lunch and take people out to lunch or do whatever the heck you have to.
Because most of them do have a credit card anyway. So, I mean, they can just do it and get the bill. Do you know that?
Yeah.
I don't know what else to do.
Unless this is, uh, I guess a call back, we just need to, a holiday, I think, because I think, but, because, everybody does appreciate, you know, can't do that issue at least.
All right, everybody okay with this?
Good job.
Thank you so much. I haven't had a lot of emails, I can't.
I like seeing emails from the people who are buying about lunch. Um, all right, moving on. Um.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with all of us. Uh, public hearing on the extension of continuity of government ordinance. Tom?
I, you know, talk more about this, this could be new, the fortitude to have these continuity of government hearings if necessary. Uh, this is, uh, in case the pandemic gets so bad that, uh, you cannot be in person just for, um, you know, this is as opposed to the emergency of the, uh, remote keeping of, uh, faculty security, an individual member, um, not due, it's a state, it doesn't require that one, because it's present, and this would, uh, sent you through that. Um, the idea is that, um, maybe one would do all this, this, I, those, um, make it, I, so, that's all. Well, this, this might help if you can't hurt, um, this is for the, for the, for the.
May I make follow-up? I open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments on our continuity of government plan? Well, I don't think we've missed one meeting yet. I like, I feel, um, back to it, we don't want to.
So, uh, Ms. Frye, do we have a number on this?
It's already ordinance number, it's already number twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
Second.
But maybe in seconds, further discussion. Karen Dunn, all in favor, she pumps in aye.
Aye.
All right, back to it. Um, Ms. Love, else for doing?
Busy. Um, we've got the Polycom set up, and we've used it twice, and that's worked well. Um, I think we've used Webex twice now. One time it worked great, one time it didn't work so good. But we still was able to hold it here, and we're going to do it tomorrow. So, we're moving along on that kind of stuff.
Um, any questions, Ms. Love? Um, Ms. Murray, good save.
Um, I guess that you all are clear, the bills have gone out. Um, I hope you proceed doing what you have, and make sure you take the power. And people have started coming in, so that's been good. Um, other than that, we'll work on that. The pre-yawn it is next week, yawn it is the week after. So, um, we're, we're busy. So, keep.
My head's above water right now.
Question? Ms. Bear?
Like everyone else, we're just as busy as I am as well, with this, I'm, I'm sure, but it's another thirteen or fourteen additional concealed amendments. Um, we need, have yet to be approved for the very trial. Uh, bill that I mentioned last time did pass, and we'll go to the next one at first. Uh, I'm sure we've also seen the additional legislation that was passed regarding the federal justice reform. I've been working with the sheriff's office, and so we're gonna do a trading with them, um, in mid-December. Hopefully, by that point, we will finish the, the special session, which is still going, um, and have an idea about what exactly those laws will be. Kevin and I are meeting with Mr. Goodlow, and he's, yeah, he's prepared excellent SETI I zoom on something with CDRJ, and we're gonna do, go through that in, um, a couple weeks, and then he'll be presenting that to the board at some point down the road. Um, the sheriff's office, um, is on track with their body worn cameras and mesh cameras, and they hope to be up and running first of December, maybe a little early. Um, so that's really gonna be interesting and exciting, and we'll see how much, how much that will happen. Videos. Um, we've always selected a case in for somewhere, so we try to go through all those details. And then, on a, on a slightly different note, um, I've been approached by a few people about concerns about the election next week, and I just want to reassure the public that I've been in contact with sheriff's office, with the registered sheriff's office, and I am completely confident that they have, any situation that may arise will be under control. We don't anticipate any situations, people in Madison are generally very polite or respectful at the polls any day. Um, and so we certainly have no reason to expect anything different on Tuesday, but in the incredibly unlikely event that something does happen, um, I feel confident that it will be handled appropriately.
Question from Ms. Bear. Great day.
Well, the animal shelter, the public animal shelter, uh, numbers of bams is good, the, oh, following up, we recently filled the shelter management position to pass her on background check before you get back from the, all that, since, all that, the way to get right here, all right up against the, to the board, whether it wants either. Other than that, good luck.
Glad to be out of the animal shelter business.
Yes.
Um, there you go.
Right.
Well, I, I, you could've come back, you have some odd opportunity, Brian. What do you got, Brian?
Same thing with same busy, that he said, building out, um, getting a lot of the person possibly to react to it before it explains, um, different sections. Land use is still coming back in. We got, uh, that soon, November second, and all that, back in, so we're, I like the, so, uh, word out and back. Other than that, same busy.
Ligon?
It's just been a lot, we've really busy, it's a lot of, I'm getting two of the calls, all the things, folks, division rights, the bill, uh, property, it's probably been that way the last, the last really, it's, it's kind of interesting, a lot of other things. No one?
No one?
We're staying busy, a little happy to report. We don't have any vacancies. Busy over the last two weeks for better reviews, so our full-time folks have been hired, our part-time are today. This is our mind, it takes about two to three months to get those numbers, but at least we have a position still. We're working there with, you know, PPE, some good order, but sort of same safe, kind of.
Um, not sure.
Uh, well, like Noah said, we've been stock PPE, it's hours, it seems like we average about eight people, eight people, uh, coming down policy tests a week. Uh, I think we're up to about ten of which have been with the hospitals at some point. Uh, still three fatalities since March, so compared to other localities, we're improved, pretty good in that. Although, I think no mistake about it, the virus is here, and we should still exercise on the, on the office. And working with EDH, we've been along, other than, we've been along some brands. That's about it.
Questions, John?
Roger?
Can I pull staff?
Oh, good, good. Uh, Ryan?
Oh, my God.
Are you full staff?
We are, yeah.
You got everybody going right direction.
Yes. We, we'll be a man short next week, because I'll be on play next week. Um, we're getting, so, I've got all this, uh, tons of stuff, uh, done in the court outfit base that day, uh, in the bathroom, um, I'm comparing some later, the bad opportunity for the rest of the courtroom, um, doing some leaves and the vault is done, and, um, we're just trying to get some, losing some.
Did you ever catch a raccoon out back? Did you ever catch a raccoon out back? I see the traffic going.
Uh, we got, we got.
Did you catch him? He's a loose, yeah, that's a, a raw. All right.
Very helpful.
That's a big, thank God you can catch big. Um, all right. Anyway, all right. Mr. Fisher, tell me about what's wrong with playing with.
Okay, um, special use permit, site plan, and site plan applications for CWS power, and you know Virginia along the Red and Dan River. It's a public hearing on four November at seven P.M. It's a joint hearing. Uh, Frank Commissioner's over here, they're workshop in. Uh, I need to be able to hand out communications on that power, and there's two very interesting commercial users for that power at this time. There are signs along two thirty-one, the mountain, the public hearing, which hopefully will, uh, alleviate, I didn't know, uh, but I've had several phone calls asking what it was about, and I explained it. Hopefully that will help. One other thing, another thing we've done is we've approved the new bylaws to the Austin County Department. That's all I have to report.
Good question from Mike, Mike Livingston.
Um, speaking about the network for the, the sheriff's, I can't, we have a network monitor on it, so that we can watch the traffic, see how it does impact any network, and if it does help. Charles is going to, and I are going to be monitoring that, so we think that'll tell us whether that's going to be a problem or not. Um, I'm down on a new ticketing system, so that we can start having reports on the amount of trouble tickets that are coming in all day long, from all over the place. So, should be able to start providing those sort of numbers to everyone now, instead of saying I'm busy, I'll just be able to show you what the type of problems that are going on with that. A new computer for the GeoCom for Mr. Gordon, uh, should be able to get that to him soon. Also went over to Green County, Brian upped them up about what they call a subnet address scheme, so the weekend link Green County and Madison County to that, that, uh, new network that tried to get up for the radios. ERP servers are gonna go, start going in on Friday, P911 Center. There's more?
Like the ideas in tables, that's it, right, like.
Um, M. Jeff?
I'm extremely busy right now. We're very short-staffed, it's very, kind of, beautiful. Um, the audit, except for Wayne Allen's in two weeks, and I have a huge amount of work to do together. I'm still trying to finalize the contracts on the ERP. I'm still trying to finalize the contracts on ERP. There's still a significant amount of work to do to finalize the fares. And I'm missing a person in my department. And I have a part-time person right now, but I'm putting in a fair number of hours myself on that, in that area. I did, please, remember, don't know this, the advertisement for the new position went out on Friday, it's on the website. It's been advertised, so. The goal is to have someone replaced by the beginning of January. I do have pretty significant concerns that we, that the people that apply and make sure that we understand what their experience and qualifications are. And that may or may not be facilitated through a typical group style interview. Or it may be through augmented, some different ways, but we need to make sure whoever we hire can pretty much walk in and start working. And doesn't need, you know, months and months of training.
All right. Questions from Joe. So you don't think we can get him in there by December first?
I think it, I think it was advertised last Friday, so I think we need to advertise for a month. Um, and I don't think we can.
I mean, how long do you advertise when, though? You're a bad example.
Clarissa? How long do you advertise for, Clarissa?
I advertise as for an extended period, but I probably pick someone in by sixteenth if I needed one.
What, heads run?
I think, my concern, my concern about trying to bring someone in. I need to get the audit done before I deal with any person and the audit won't be done until twelve fifteen. They're talking about the last two weeks in December.
And the ad is out.
Okay.
Get something good.
Um, all right. Board movement toward up there. Tom, talk to us about the November, uh, November, December board meetings.
Yes, this, this happens every year where we have a whole series of holidays. And our meetings seem to bug them against the holidays. And so I put this in front of you in the form of, I'm not sure we need three meetings in November and December to work on. So you might consider moving meeting times around so that we can reduce the number of meetings. Most troubling one is the December twenty second scheduled meeting. I'm not sure you want to have a meeting during Christmas week. If you do, that's, that's fine. My suggestion is to have one meeting in December on the fifteenth. If you'd like. Similarly with the November schedule. Second meeting is on Thanksgiving week and the governor's given us four hours of leave time on Wednesday, so that might some flow style, but this is up to the board. The other thing I would suggest is that if you want to have a retreat or goal setting session this year, it'd be good to be scheduling that now so we can work on meeting content, format, agenda, so forth.
All we do is the ten twenty fourth and then the eighth and so forth. And then we cancel the twenty second. Everybody's Christmas now. Done with that, but I think we've got a lot of stuff going on. Other one is on the eighteen, planning commission has a workshop. Is it something that we could, eighteen more than sixteen? Do our planning session with some tasks, different goals. For like we did last year. If you saw something you wanted to do.
In November?
November or December, I did that.
To add a meeting?
Yeah, just do it prior to the planning commission meeting.
Oh, two there, okay.
Um, where there are workshop.
Maybe, or maybe on the second.
On Wednesday.
December second.
December second.
Do it on the second, or maybe before on the second. That work for everybody? Work. Get it knocked out, you got it. Saw Ms. Robson's update on goals that we set previous year. How long you open it? You can take an hour and a half.
Um, probably a couple of hours.
Let's drive for.
Let's see. Planning commissions, the joint meetings at seven. Yeah, so we can wait for.
They start pulling in at six thirty. So I mean, if we can do, if we knock down in two hours, shit. That's a bummer to have a thirty in the morning. Not pretty. All the IT stuff and Prime stuff. Sure, Noah's got always something good, so we need to keep that going. Maybe, see if we don't, we don't have very much to report.
Uh, that work for everybody?
So I think the goal is to only try to keep something moving.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, MJ, where are we at with care act funding?
Um, so I would like to point out that at the last meeting, the directions leading that meeting were that we didn't want to revisit this until the first meeting in November. So they were basically my marching orders between that meeting and this meeting. I was out sick for three days and I was basically, I was on antibiotics and painkillers for part of last week. So, you know, the ability of me to move this forward in, since last week, well, since the last meeting has been pretty limited. The biggest change right now is that the, is that the town has come back with a formal request of seventeen, seventeen thousand two hundred. Their other, their prior request was for forty seven hundred. So this, it represents basically a twelve, a twelve thousand five hundred dollar increase in, in funding requests. My recommendation to the board is that you tentatively approve this so that they, so that I can tell them to move forward with the items that they need to do procurement on so that they can actually expend this money before the end of the year. I have looked at, I have been working through. I'm sorry. Okay, so, so, um, you recall, as, as of the end of the last meeting, there wasn't enough money to go around to pay, there's only fifteen thousand dollars that was uncommitted. Um, I've looked at the numbers, some more, I've talked to department heads, we're trying to tighten up these numbers. In a couple of cases, the numbers changed. Some cases, we, there's been a decision not to move forward with something because it was unfeasible. I think I can get another twenty thousand dollars maybe out of this number. But, but, I mean, there's seventeen, there's a seventeen thousand dollar request on the table from the town. And the, the two open items that we haven't been able to resolve, and I don't really have an answer on it yet, is the request for the four H center and the request from the Madison Learning Center that are related to operational support and not to, or requests to fund specific items. I don't have answers on them yet. I don't even know if there's enough, if there's going to be money to do it, so I haven't spent a lot of time. But, um, the rationale for doing that with the CARES money is, it's not as clear to me. Sean can give you that. Of how we go about doing that and, and how we do it for two organizations and, and not other organizations. It's just, because we didn't open this process up to other organizations, yes, with that money. So that's all I had on this.
Binary numbers, uh, it should be closer. Uh, we should be closer being screwed up.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, I think my goal is to have the discreet items that the county wants to buy. I want to have procurement done, basically. The two biggest areas are going to be both facilities, both Roger's department and NOAA have a need for basic supplies, you know, two hundred dollars, either five hundred. I think we've talked to both of them and I think between the two of them, they can probably do everything that they need for somewhere between combined twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars. Which, there's more than that in this budget, in the numbers right now. So I think we'll, but there's some other things that still have to come through the pipeline where there's been some differences between estimates and, and what was on the schedule last time. So it's.
All right.
I just can't, I, I mean, the numbers move and they move every two days and it, it's really not something, you know, doing this once a month for you is probably what I would prefer to do rather than giving you an update every two weeks.
Well, let's see where we're at in November seventh. It's been lots of verbal. Um, I think Warren Age and Marketing Center, who double that, have low list, uh, those two will go with that. The tail though.
Have seen the request.
Yeah, it's seventeen two.
Correct.
Um, I'm looking at it. What have they spent ten thousand dollars on? I have been in there.
So I made it clear to them that they could, they make a request to you. Give you a rationale for why it was CARES related. But the way the document would be written to them is they could spend up to, but they wouldn't get the money unless they could demonstrate to us that they had actually spent it. So, so we can say that we're giving them seventeen two, but unless they can actually come up with, with, you know, invoices and commitments of that amount of money, they're not going to get it anyway. They don't have, they don't have, um, I mean, obviously this work hasn't been done and they, they didn't have hard quotes on some of the things they wanted to do. But my basic understanding is they want a security system, that's one of the things they want. They have IT work. They want to make some other improvements, but I don't have any more information other than that.
So no justice.
I don't know.
It's just a.
Security system is like a care dealer.
Well, I think the issue is, is that they have, they haven't, um, they kept their doors locked and they have this, this line out the door that extends into the parking lot. And they, well, that they want to be able to see who's outside their building. I mean, that, that is the last thing that I had heard.
Yeah, I see.
And that, and that, I, I mean, I do think that does.
Getting allowed in the door.
I mean, we, we actually tried to do something like that in our building, didn't work. But because when we had our door locked, because we couldn't see who was outside trying to get in.
Is putting a security camera outside air, how does them operating the DMV make this work? Cause I, I don't see the DMV as part of Talons. I mean, I, I know they operate it.
Yeah.
But is that part of the Talons? The DMV didn't give out any money, I know that they're operating, they're doing real well opening less than fifty percent of their.
I, I mean, I don't, you know, I mean, I, I, with these outside organizations, I really can't emphasize to you not how many, how many hours and hours and hours I spent on the telephone talking to all these people. Trying to give them, trying to talk to them about what they can use and what they can't use. But, but I, I can't answer all of your questions. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here, my role has not been to audit these requests.
Um, do a little digging on this one. I'll go down there, see, see what that is. Does the DMV change anything? Is that tail business?
I think they're a contractor for DMV. But I think my, my understanding is the CARES Act money is meant to keep people separated. So if there's a way to talk to people, an intercom, you can see who's outside, you don't have to come face to face. That's, that's the justification.
But is there, you think, is there a DMV aspect of it? Does that change it or not?
I don't, I don't think so. Still a public service.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's check into the DMV, see what the heck happened. Um, I'll go over.
So I, I, my understanding is that this town arrives a lot of funding, not in that, but I mean. So.
Yeah, so.
Thursday a week? Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem supporting the town and bumping somebody like the Learning Center out if the town.
And I think we are past to like school over back, because what they're for is money. I think it's the same type of equation here on the town. I just, I mean, that office is very, very, very small. Like we've said multiple times. There is very, very rare that you get billed for ten thousand dollars.
It's not, it's not a ten thousand, I don't think the bill was a ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars for that allocation. I do, I do have to say though, the problem is going to be is if you kick this, if you kick the decision at to one more board meeting, I, I think the problem for them is going to be whatever they want to do, they're going to have a really limited period of time to go out and do it. That's why I kind of encourage you to try to make a decision about, about what you want to give to town.
But they haven't given us a date this evening. A request, you asked for supporting documentation.
No, no, I don't, I mean, no. They have to make a request. They have to say what they want to spend it on. But the way the document would be written is we will give you an allocation of up to X provided you provide us. Evidence of spending. Yeah, and, and I made that very clear. I had a fairly long conversation with the town attorney last week and I made it clear that just because we say we're going to give you something doesn't mean you're going to get it if you don't spend it. You got to prove to us you spent it, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering how they're going to justify the payroll expenses, but I mean, I know how I do it.
So they had already provided us with some payroll dollars and he, and the county attorney, the town attorney specifically told me that they had been through all their payroll records and that they thought that they could substantiate these dollars.
All right. Do you even want more justification of this document? Y'all want just for seventeen two?
That, that, that does include the forty seven hundred already, right? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, she said they're not going to get it unless they.
No, I agree.
Yeah, so we can approve it, but it's.
We need to make sure the rules are very well laid out. We should, I would be sharing on the YouTube side. Oh, when approved, it's seventeen two for the town or do you want more documentation? And we do, need to do it tonight or can you keep doing it on the cell?
I think she said we need to do it.
I, I don't, that's the thing that I get to go, I don't, I don't know if I go along with that. It's not about putting on a security camera outside, they certainly need that within two months. That is a very, very small space. They've got two months from November seventh on to do it and they can already make plans. Tonight or not?
I'm good with doing it tonight.
All right.
I'm, I'm moved to approve their request for not to exceed seventeen two CARES Act money.
Second.
It was made in second, we're in discussion. Here in the library, we'll say hi.
Hi.
Um, all right. ERP project, enjoy.
So. I have displaced my funding now. So this wasn't really a discussion about, I mean, my intention at this board meeting was for you to do a capital budget appropriation for October to pay for what, what we still need in funding on the ERP system. Because if you fall, we have money allocated.
Can we do that as part of this support? Don't we have?
Well, I requested that I be on the agenda. Well, I requested that I be on the agenda, and, um, and I distributed via email, and I also gave you all a hard copy of the draft resolution.
We do have, um, another one there, you got nails. What would y'all like to do with this?
You know, I left this in one line, you got a few questions to take. Just, we have additional time, just leave it.
But it should be noted that this is actually, what I'm requesting is the board to make an appropriation from the original budget.
Yes.
I, I need to...
Do you want to walk through, um, the...
I, I, um, I'm afraid that I can't find my paperwork.
Share.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Share.
So, um, the original analysis that I gave you on 9-2 of all the ERP costs showed total ERP costs of $668,000. The revised estimate is now $672,000. It may not by about $3,200. That's completely related to the IT, the infrastructure that we've talked about before. It relates to needing a different kind of backup device and, and changes related to licensing. Um, the bigger change is that with the exercise that we did last board meeting, we found out we didn't have enough money, um, because schedules, because there was a lot of stuff that wasn't on the schedule, or the numbers weren't up to date. So, that I couldn't use as much, I, I, I needed, I ended up taking $52,000 out of what I originally guessed. So, I, so, um, I need more money, and I now need another $55,309, or $283,202, um, from a source that I don't have right now. I, I, what I, what I'm proposing right now is to take $208,000 out of CARES money. There's already $180,000 in the budget that's been appro, in the original capital budget, it's already been appropriated, but I need another $283,000. So, my recommendation from where to take that is if you go to, um, the back two pages of this report, the original capital budget included $61,000 for a direct response vehicle, which is now being paid for with CARES money. There is also a $15,000 in other equipments, which is now being paid for with CARES money. And, um, there is also $208,000 left over that was never appropriated for ambulance. So, they would be my sources of where I take that money from. I would point out, though, that, um, the way the budget was, the original budget was formulated, part of that money is in the general fund, and part of that money was in the capital projects fund. When we do this ERP project, all of the ERP costs will be in the capital projects fund. In order to move the money from the general fund to the ER, to the capital projects fund, I actually need to do a supplemental. That's the rule. I need, so, in addition to this, this will give you the money based on the original budget, but it won't be in the right buckets. I'll need to move the 75 as a supplemental from the general fund, and I'll, I'll do that as long as you approve this. This is, this is, this is how much we need to pay everything. That's basically what I'm...
So, you can do the supplemental next meeting?
Yeah, I, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to put this together until today, and, uh, it's too late. I didn't want to do another supplemental, but I will do it next time. And it's contingent upon your approval.
What do you need to, resolution 20-26? Yep. We all want to...
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number 2020-26.
Second.
First, main second, further discussion? Here in none. Got something to add on this one or not?
I just want to make one more comment before we move on.
On ERP?
Yeah.
On the resolution or on the...
No.
Motion, main second, further discussion? Here in none, all of here, two folks saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign, now please.
Okay, so, we're, I just want to, Bruce has already said that we'll have the servers installed. Is this the end of next week?
No, they're starting this Friday.
Okay, so, servers will be up and running. Won't be anything on them, though, but, but, uh, the, except for the transfer of the, of the existing servers. However, um, the contracts have all been reviewed, they, that, that's kind of been in my inbox, to tell you the truth. I haven't really been able to make much progress on that. I am getting, I have gotten massive number of inquiries from our, all of our vendors, and, um, I intend to work on that tomorrow. It's just a matter of how fast we can work through all the comments, get them resolved, and get the contracts signed. Because my understanding right now is contracts have been reviewed by Stephanie, by Brian, by me, by Cardy, and by, and by, um, Sean, and that Jack has indicated that he wants Sean to be, basically be the, um, arbiter, or something, the final decision maker in terms of resolving open comments. So...
Actually, the, uh, the idea was, this is project manager, you want to take a lead on that, and work on that, uh, Sean and I are to be supporting other people, so, legal issues, if Sean's, but if it's a matter of negotiating contracts, getting those, uh, together, that's, that's, that's what I'll...
There's no, I mean, the contracts, there have been no changes from the contracts. Sean had some, some suggestions on, uh, changes, legal language changes. I think the two most substantive questions I've had are, you know, were there rate changes with, um, I think IT contract? And no, not really. I, I think that there was a misunderstanding of the way the contract was written. The other, and there's a, a potentially one question about, is there duplication related to something in the Tyler and laser fuse contracts? And I think the answer is no.
Right.
But I, I can pursue it.
So, tomorrow, you plan on working on these, I assume?
Alongst a lot of other things.
Yes, ma'am. Um, but I assume that from tomorrow, um, hopefully, we can get them forwarded and finalize, uh, file to Tom Brad, so we can review them, and we can get Hox on these, and pretty...
Sean has, has indicated to me, I was talking to him about this, that he would like to, because he has a very busy work week next week, that he would like to see them by, by Saturday. So, I don't see any, on my end, I don't see any problem with that. Um, we are going to have to get, we have that, one of the contracts, the laser fuse contract, actually, it's based on quotes, and it expires at the end of August, uh, October. So, if we can't get that one signed before, before Friday, then we need to get another quote from them. He's already told me that he would change it.
Then we need to put the priority on laser fish, getting this done first. If the Hox can sign that, I'm sure Sean Brad, I'm the fancy words of it. Um, get laser fish knocked out first, um, and then any other contracts that are out there, we can keep on going. Try to get them done this week. That work? Very good.
Uh, anything else on this?
Good, moving on. Um, this all in privilege bill. I talked to Kent there from Boston before the meeting, um, he's got it, he's got it revised. He just had more back over here, trying to keep his schedule and all this, all detail. Everything, like we all know, is jeopardized so heavily. Um, he goes out, he's planning on getting it back over to us. Um, he also has a personal stuff, but he's, he's planning on it. Also, the wonderful day from the gentleman, actually, I think, crazy word for me, so, thank you. Um, very pleasant individual, yes, ma'am. He's a very, very preliminary type of state, um, people, the back of the plan, you know it to us, and we'll see where we go from there. Understand, all I'm thinking is talking to a European fellow. Uh, accent.
Oh, yes, ma'am. An all-time record. I mean, it's not, what's, what's, is there a full south sign out there?
There's a sign.
Okay.
I'll be heading that way, I'll take a picture of it and send it to you.
Okay, it's fine.
And now?
It's real safe. Might be worth, uh, maybe, just on Zillow, yeah, I think they just listed it out there.
Do you think about this, and there's any rules? Sure.
All the material, that's the one we're working, we're talking about.
So, you put it on there, listen, and see where that comes. Everybody good with that? I'm hoping to do, list the dang thing, Mr. from Boston gets this contract, that'd be great. I'll be glad to work with somebody, but just keep it going. Not long. Uh, he's got it revised, he's, 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 he's still very interested, has people that he thinks would be interested in going in. I think the, the comment that I made to the gentleman today, he looked, it'd be more pleasant, but same type of, uh, in some extent, same type of business model, which is what we talked about previously. Um, the comment that just he, that I made to him was, do you have any experience doing renovations on local buildings? He's obviously be able to do, and if we could solicit somebody of that nature that has that expertise, that would be easier to access, and something that would be meaningful to, uh, say... But, um, I do think, play it on Zillow, unless it was haircut, I would give, you know, a million dollars, maybe, for it.
I was gonna say, it now comes with a swinging bridge.
Uh, Kevin, uh, I, uh, still work for him, yes. Um, does that work as a plan? Um, anything else on that? Alright.
Taking off his hat.
Yes. Roger, tell us about, if you're planning on the implementation of the pay plan.
I would like to, uh, request that you revisit the, um, salary increases for the people of the non, how do you put, the non-public safety, uh, people. Um, in my 15 years here, we've had probably four case studies done with, uh, this is the first one that we've actually got some results from, for some people. Um, but I'd just like you to revisit it and maybe possibly, uh, grant to those, uh, individuals that haven't got info this year. Um, the total of the two months, the two remaining months would be $16,219.
Alright. Oh, Roger, I'd say something. Um, talking $16,219, we covered the majority of it, they got a plan, we're going to implement it, wire to it. We are talking about, all these people have been coming into work, um, continually, uh, since the sort of COVID, if you talk about oppression and work force, especially with people that are working here, and that, I guess we could, I'll see $16,000 as a, as an indicator on where we're at today. Um, if we can make this act like it was, or stuff like that, that'd be a good, decent thing.
I, I don't disagree. Uh, I, I don't want to put MJ over the edge. You've got, let's see, in my counting mind, so you've got...
You've got to process the payroll for the first to the 15. Uh, about the 13.
Yeah, Tilly already knows, I already told her.
That it's just coming.
So, it's going to be Tilly, so, this is doable for you?
I mean, I can give her the numbers, but I already know what the numbers are.
Okay.
Um, and I'm the, I mean, the number that, I gave Roger that number, $16,000, so I've already figured it out.
But, the, the one thing I would like to say, Mr. Barry, is that since my quote... Should understand, uh, has, I, it's been taken out of context. Uh, my inflection when I said that, my intention was, I think they, I think, so the, the employees will understand, as opposed to they must understand. And I think if you go back and look at that, you'll see that I said, I think they should understand. It's not, you know what I'm saying? My inflection was not that they must understand, and that's it. I just want to...
It sounds more like me. But you confused me now by using inflection. Uh... No, I think, in the storm, I told him so, I mean, nobody knew what, how this was all going to take out and, and... CARES money has actually worked in our favor in a lot of ways, and it will suffer a lot of anticipated costs. Um, it does pertain to CARE, to COVID-19, um, and our accelerated format for addressing those. But now, we're, we've gotten to a point where, I guess everybody's got to use the, the new moral, uh, which I believe will be going away soon. Um, something like this now would be, if we all did it the same way, and it was probably the right thing to do. Here we are today, and.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we, um, implement the pay for the non-public safety employees effective November first.
Second.
What's main second, further discussion? Tom, you got anything on all of this? Absolutely, absolutely. Um, further discussion. You're done, all the thirty five, say no like.
All right.
Thank y'all.
So part of the twenty-two ninety-five? Just kidding.
I didn't hear that in question. All right. Moving on. Um, the emergency operations plan, Mr. Shear.
All right, let's talk a little bit about the emergency operations plan. Um, it's an all hazards plan designed, uh, for reference during a major incident, which is a disaster in Madison County. Uh, public sa- public safety and hazard mitigation is a responsibility of government, and, uh, this plan is played off the source. The plan is required by State Code forty-four dash one forty-six point one nine, titled powers and duties of political sub-. Uh, this code requires a comprehensive review and revision that shall be conducted every four years and shall be adopted by the locality's governing body. Um, I've updated the plan to reflect the county's relationship with the voluntary rescue squads and the changing sheltering practices, um, along with routine names and phone number change to go along. Um, we've attempted to make the documents as, uh, as usual friendly and as possible, uh, with help of the VDA plans. The document consists of base, of a basic plan that addresses responsibilities and the chain of command. It sort of breaks down into emergency support functions or what we call ESF. Depending on the type of incident or the severity of the disaster, the individual support functions will come into play. Um, my suggestion is that each of you that access electronically, electronically to the plan and a certain number of hard copies be available. Uh, I guess this has to be a resolution approved by the board every four years for State Code. Uh, I asked Mr. Hobbs to give you folks a copy of it early, it's fairly lengthy. Nothing else interesting to read, you'll never read, but it's pretty handy. But a State Code needs to be adopted by you folks.
I think we have questions for John. This has been a very small amount of work for John, he did twenty thirty that, um.
I just knocked right out. And no, like I said, he's focused, the discussion.
Uh, thank y'all for your hard work. Um, do you have a resolution number twenty? What is, what, what, what the actual number may miss from? Um, Hobbs, you got anything on this?
Actually, this is required, this is an update, uh, from figure.
Um, all right, this was a board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash seven, twenty-seven.
Uh, what's main and second, further discussion? What? Somebody say.
Ms. Hall.
Uh, what's main and second, further discussion? You're done, all the thirty five, say no like.
All right.
Thank y'all, no, I have a big gap. Um, all right, disposition of, um, the American Legion property, or the, the American Legion came to, uh, Parks and Rec. They've asked if they can get their property back. Um, in the, um, in the term, in the terms of sale and the deed, it does revert back to, they don't use it. Uh, PRA doesn't use it. PRA is working currently with the American Legion, requiring these same, um, document for the use of the OCKY rent, so they can stay there, um, until, probably doing a bit of a raid. Um, they have not asked for any kind of dictatorial money or anything with the American Legion. They've made it very clear that they've planned work with the, um, the OCKY League and PRA actively in a positive manner. Um, I think they're gonna make a hundred and twenty-five dollars over ten years on this, this for them. Um, the question that I think I had at this point is the land was granted to Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec at that time was not in the board, but it was part, more part of an accounting. Is it us or Parks and Rec that has to go through, I would assume some type of process, uh, within the lifetime?
At the end of the day.
All right. What do we need to do to start the process to give them the land back?
The challenge we have is whenever we give away the property, you have that public hearing.
Um, at PRA's meeting last Monday, um, they're gonna come back to, uh, come back to the, uh, the, uh, the American Legion. Come back, and Parks and Rec is requiring this lease. I think the direction that we need to adopt is to be aware of it, um, until a formal request comes from the PRA for proceeding this act. Is that correct?
I still have to refer you to that.
So what, so we would have Danny Kregler, the president of the chair of the PRA, come before this board?
Deliver a formal request to us at.
Yeah, okay.
Soon, um, and then we go through the public hearing process after the head in, just granted over. All right, do you have any questions? Mike Fisher did bring up the pools building, immediately made you think, the American Legion wants to blow the pool. Well, thanks to Mike Fisher. I was really hoping the start chat room for you, I, 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 hey, everybody else makes them up about us, I mean, I figured Mike Fisher. The American Legion really has, they've been absolutely flooded with, um, can't say nothing to stop them, what they're doing. Um, anything else on that? Um, oh yeah, start with this, this whole time. You know about the, the server development tax abatement. So to the floor, um, would you come over here?
Yeah.
I think this is. Oh, that's very important.
Happen is, the server needs to apply for the, uh, the application deadline is in March. So she'll apply through the Virginia Housing, used to be called the HDA, in March. They're competitive applications, and there's, and they basically grade them on a number of points. And I've kinda said this in my, in my memo. Uh, there are four things that the locality can do to help the applicant receive more points. If they get the most points, then the project is funded with the credits. Three of the things, as I said in the old memo I wrote, are, are pretty much just sort of sure kind of things, they're not really very hard. A, a, a letter saying that the zoning supports the project, that doesn't say the site plan has been approved. There's still that, but it just says the zoning, underlying zoning does support the project, that's, that's what we correct. You have to have a CEO support letter, which is pretty basic, and that's just county administrator saying, we're okay with this. A resolution in support of the, of the project. Again, the understanding, we, we realize there, the other hoops that have to be sort of jumped through. And the last that, you know, again, the server has made it clear that she really needs everything to, in order to win, win these credits, is a tax abatement. Um, and this is a little more technically complicated, but it really isn't too complicated. Uh, if you look, I give an example of what Gordonsville did for one of her projects. Um, I mean, it's probably not unusual that some of these developers ask for whatever the full, you know, full tax might be for three years. And in this case, once the improvements are made on the property, right now you have a property that's assessed at a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So if she builds an improvement, which she estimates is somewhere around eight million, then the taxes would go from, as I pointed out, annually, eight hundred annually, what we're paying, what the, I guess what Mr. Weaver is paying now, to once it's improved, you're looking at fifty-eight thousand at best estimate. So she is simply asking for three years to have an abatement on those, on those, uh, for three years. Kind of token, um, she said two thousand dollars a year would help her with her application. It, it's called an ordinance, but the way it looks to me, it's really just what I'd call a, a non-codified ordinance. It says ordinance, it's really kind of a resolution, and you just fairly clearly, like Gordonsville did, just detail, year one, you'll pay your taxes, we'll turn around and give you the two thousand dollars back. We'll follow something like Gordonsville. So, um, Mr. Gentry was here, but he, he just left, he said something, he didn't know if it's gonna be quite this late, so, um. You know, she, she says very clearly that she would need this in order to, 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 to win approval. Uh, she'd be happy to come, you know, at the next, if we do, do, if we do the, um, ordinance, we'd have to advertise it as a public hearing. We can include the resolution, the ordinance in kind of one package. She can come, have a public hearing, anybody in the, I was in the public there wants to comment. You know, she's out near Bristol, I believe it is, so I, I told her tonight, just, just stay at home. Um, it's really up to the board, uh, it really, I mean, you're gonna be collecting more taxes on the property than, you know, we ever did, just being raw land. I did talk to Bill a little bit in Carlisle, and I really, when I come back for our site plan, again, if, if everyone's agreeing with this, I, I told Bill to really maybe think about developing, because there's a front portion that's seven or eight acres, the back portion. Let's really think about this, if we do get to a site plan one day, about maybe how we would develop the whole property. Not just say, you know, we're gonna put a apartment building here with a road or a connection, but how this whole sort of property will kind of piece together in the course of the next couple of years, ten years. And they're, they're like, that would be great, that would definitely be everything on the table as far as developing. Thinking about a green spot, there's a, there's some woods in one section of it, and I was thinking, wouldn't that be kind of a nice, maybe you could make some of a little park or something out of that, and they were totally sort of on board with thinking about how the whole site can be developed. So, three of the things, pretty simple. Tax abatement ordinance is common for these type of projects, just shows, I guess the county has a little bit of skin in the game, I guess. But again, she really just wants it to be just kind of more token support to help her project with approval.
Would you, some of those?
Yes, there's something, uh, fairly new in Madison County. Madison County's gone down the path of, of giving tax rebates for industrial developments. I think there's one coming up, uh, real soon, uh, for an ag, uh, project. Um, and, and, and that's fine, the idea there is that those are net tax producers. Uh, the issue, um, I would have with this is that this is a residential development, and residential development comes with school kids, which are, are thought to be a drain on the county's, um, budget, if you will. So the residential does not pay for itself, the commercial and the, some of the ag stuff does. So it's a question of how, how strongly you feel about supporting, uh, this development, which is admittedly one of the few major things we've got going on in Madison County. So, um, caution you also that this does require a hearing, and there is strong opposition to the development in that neighborhood. So, uh, you gotta understand how this might play if not only they've got their, uh, zoning cleared, they have to make this application for funding, and now the county is, is helping them financially. So I, I would point that out.
I don't know if it's helping financially, she needs this as a process, correct?
It's, it's helping financially, but it's, it's so minimal in the grand scheme of things. Like I said, you brought up earlier that you could ask the whole, whole portion for three years.
I mean, I think a lot of people do, they try to put it back into the project.
She just asked him for two thousand.
Right, she's just asking for it. Now, as far as the school children goes, I did kind of do a little bit of estimating. I, I think it's safe to say half of the project's gonna be probably not in school age residents. I, I sort of just came up with, you know, there could be ten to maybe twenty, at best case scenario, say, school kids. But now as far as, Clay, Clay and I were talking this afternoon, um, you do get a state reimbursement for the children. I don't know if it totally works that you have, you know, extra kids, and so it means a dollar, you know, that, that the county has to perp people or money for each student. I'm not really sure if that's sort of how it works, but, um, I don't think s- school capacity is really a.
Yeah, I don't think.
An issue.
No, we've got a declining population in the school.
Age is the same way. Now, we kept plenty of space and we, we don't have the kids. Um, I mean, e- even sometimes places that are growing are not growing with school age kids, you know, populations. Uh, so, uh, that would, to me, of course, you know, fire service and rescue, that, that's definitely gonna be, you know, uh, more calls. Uh, that's probably the most direct, uh, sort of, uh, day-to-day difference that, you know, that would be a tax on, on, on the county. Um, but again, I mean, what's being collected now, it's, it's, it's considerable increase in, in, in assessment.
All right. Yeah, I, I would say that, well, I would guess, because we, we've done some studies on this through Head Start and stuff too, that a good percentage of those kids that end up there are kids that are already in the school system. They're just now moving into a place of their own because they don't have to live with the aunt and uncle grandparents, parents anymore. So that's gonna be, so I mean, I strongly support this, I think six grand over three years is a pittance. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it.
We do know the influence and effect some of the major stuff there, it could be taken into consideration. It would be upset for them in the development opportunity. Um, anybody else got anything on this?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it too. Jack is, I guess it is correct that, um, development like this, higher density re- uh, development like this could have some additional, will have some additional, um, you know, cost to the county, to the county and county government. But, you know, these are people that, you know, we can have in their own homes. Uh, maybe some people that will live here that can't live here now because we, they're teachers or whatever. Um, and, you know, I, not to go back into campaigning mode, and, and it's not gonna happen. Yeah, I, I saw that. But, um, you know, one of the, one of the beefs we, we've taken for as long as I can remember is anybody affiliated with planning commission forward, that you guys are not business friendly. And it dawned on me early that one of the most unfriendly things about Madison, uh, is we, we just don't have customers here. You gotta have, businesses need customers. And so, even though, you know, it will cost us something as a county probably for our resident, our development residential, um, at least there'll be people that'll eat in restaurants, I hope, and, um, do other things that require other services that, uh, that will be good employment opportunities for people that are here. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm with everybody else, I'm making favor of doing this. And I, I think it is a good idea to have them look at, even, even if it's just a conceptual thing about developing everything, or as much as, there's not as enough, not as much of the vacuum there, you know how creative Madison folks are. If you don't give them something, they make something up. Um, I guess that's everything. So whether it's part of the site plan that we see officially or not, if there's something more that they can bring, I think that would be a nice.
Yeah, no, I told you, we should think about the whole, whole fourteen acres, and not just, this is one, you know, how, how it can be connected. Maybe there could be a space in the middle that could be shared space. Um, so they were very much thought that that was a, a good idea.
Yep. Mr. Hobbs, I do appreciate your comments though, like hearing that, that side.
My, 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 my bet was.
Yeah.
Things that just.
Yeah, sure, I appreciate it, thank you.
Don't want to go ahead and pursue.
We can do the advertisement, and, uh, she pays for that, as I pointed out, so she'll pay for the advertisement, and we can do it at, uh, I guess a month from now, um, we'll just plan to do it at this kind of regular meeting.
Very good. Very good. Um. Yes, sir.
Did you have something, Ryan?
So, Lee, is it an abatement, or is it a refund?
Uh, I haven't looked at the ordinance, but I believe Lee, these things work, is it's a refund that you pay. That's, that's other like enterprise zone, that's how it always works, I have a bill, you pay.
It says in the ordinance going, town council will solicit comments on consideration, this is your public hearing notice. Uh, town council will solicit comments on the consideration of the ordinance's bottom, he, for, on a portion of real estate tax increases.
We'll figure that one out before the hearing. Exactly.
And the other pipe.
Right, 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 we'll figure out exactly if it's, uh, you know, you know, they come in, they all their property. Usually it's, that's how it's worked in other, other programs, and you just refund them, but either way, we'll, we'll make sure it's clear. Before it'll be okay, it's something that's really gonna make a difference to your office or.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it sounds like we need to talk to Brian, make sure all is good, straight, give this thing advertised when we go to the night.
Yep.
Um, information, course, one, uh, guys, like. Actual public comment? Yes, sir.
I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief. Um, I, I thank the board for their comments to, um, VDOT. I think their questions were spot on. VDOT has brought the situation on Madison County by failure to maintain the bridges, there's no question. And, um, just simple things like routine painting. Um, you know, you look at the two cables on the possum store side, one has remnants of silver paint from I don't know how many years ago. The other has no evidence of ever been painted. So, so they put Madison County in a really difficult position with two solutions. Demolition of the bridge for maybe a hundred thousand dollars, or demolition followed by replacement, which is on the order of a million and a half to two and a half million, which, yeah, it's unreasonable. On the other hand, uh, Professor Elsie, who I totally, uh, believe his evaluation, says the bridge could be refurbished for on the order of the cost that, uh, VDOT would, uh, say it would cost to tear it down. So the question is how to make that happen. And I just wanna throw something out, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but suppose Madison County were to acquire the bridge from VDOT? And the citizens of Madison County that signed that petition, I can promise you would be happy to raise funds to do the refurbishing and work with the county to keep the bridge. And I don't know the legalities of that situation, but that seems to be, uh, we have to come up with a solution that's a little bit different than the one that VDOT is proposing, and I see something like that is possibly a potential solution. So I would just like to throw that out, or any other ideas to the board, because I think the people that value that bridge will get behind the board and, um, and support it. Thank you.
Let's see what VDOT hopes back will, um, uh, this server was. Roger seems to wanna take care of it.
I would think that Roger would be great.
I'll be short as well. Um, I invite you all to come take a look, it's a ten-minute drive, uh, and, uh, you might run into stuff by the possum store, they. It's a ten-minute drive, uh, and, uh, you might want to stop by the possum store, they show Renee, she would treat you well. But seriously, uh, by looking at it yourself, I think it would help you ascertain the credibility of these two reports, the one given with all due respect from this shepherd and Jim's expert. Uh, I think in many ways, uh, she's, this is genuine, I mean, she's talking about replacing planks in, in the bridge. Well, they've been doing that since nineteen thirty-eight, since they, I mean, they pave roads every two years, right? So, uh, anyway, I would encourage you to, to do that, and, uh, Carter, I thought your questions were spot on. Uh, as Jim pointed out, you look at those cables, and if they check those out year after year, it's been many years since they've been painted. And it kind of irks me that we're here because they didn't do their job, uh, and these deficiencies have occurred. And on top of that, they've closed the thing down. Our expert says that it's not unsafe, that eventually it will be, if it, if these modifications and corrections are not made, but, uh, maybe they closed it down to keep the experts out, I don't know. Thank you.
Other public comment? Is any going to put a set, please? All right, Phil, I, yes, sir.
Can we talk to Mike, please?
Mike? Yes, yeah.
So, a few days ago, uh, so this is back to the CARES money a little bit, you'll remember what I, I brought on last meeting here two weeks ago, that there was a new pot of CARES money available from the state, uh, also required to be spent by December twenty-fifth. So in that subsequent time, I wrote and have submitted to Jack via Tracy, who's not able to be here, uh, six small, roughly twenty-five to thirty-thousand-dollar individual things that we might be able to do at various points around the county that would include broadband expansion on not a huge basis, but each one of them looking at fifty to a hundred house locations. Uh, there's quite a bit of stuff there and not a lot of time left in which to say, yes, we would like to do this sort of thing. It does, uh, have, submission to the state must come from the county, I can't do it. Uh, and so that requires some signatures, which I think amount to Clay and Jack and either Stephanie or MJ to sign off on. There are the issues, oh, and, and would need some, um, agreement from the county's lawyer, Mr. Gregg. I don't have a clue what that would actually mean or amount to. But yes, and, and he has certainly been that before, so, you know, uh, we have very little time left in which to attempt to tackle this. None of them are big things, mind you, I dropped all those out. Suggesting just because of the particularly short timeframe available to, to work any of this. So sooner is better than later, because once they commit the money, that's the end of it. But, uh, the guy from Richmond did tell me if we came up with an idea on December twenty-fourth that we could execute in twenty-four hours and they still had some money left, they'd say, yeah, that sounds good. So there is no, no official deadline associated with it at all, it's just once they run out of money, that's the end of the game.
Other information, uh, kind of different question here.
There you go.
Y'all going to review this and figure out what's happening?
Yeah, there, there are a series of issues here. Uh, you know, there's six different sites here, all with different peculiarities. I guess the first one is, uh, the idea of using the Krieger'sville site, uh, for an antenna of location, and the idea is there to put a pole on the roof with some solar collectors, and, uh, that would be a location for an antenna site. So it puts the county in an awkward position if we're trying to dispose of the property.
Yeah, yeah, that was the first I'd heard of that, so I would argue if that's what the plan is right now, just strike that.
All right.
Because then I'd want to talk to a new owner anyway.
So, all right, the way this is going to shake out, just Bob, Bob, Tracy, John Brad, you knew what it is, and then we pulled with our motion last time, was go ahead and proceed or was it, bring it back in front of the board, or what, what, where, where are we at here with this?
No, that was the theory, that, uh, all this would be done administratively, but, well, we can't be waiting around for another, for this kind of thing. Issue is that there are some, some issues with these different, um, applications. Um, for example, uh, rights to be on cell phone towers, that might take several months to get that sorted out, and so that's.
So I've already spoken with that.
A question whether that is actually feasible to accomplish. Um, there's, uh, the issue of interference with county radios on the radiant tower. We have, uh, existing public safety radios and new, new public safety radios going up there, and I asked, uh, Brian earlier if he had a chance to look at that, and, um, short answer was no. Same thing with the, um, tower at the Madison Rescue Squad, so we need to get that, uh, some of those things straightened out. We, we cannot interfere with the safety radio.
I'm pretty sure that it turns around very quickly with that, and this is not a, would not be an out of the blue thing, I did have this conversation more than once over the last couple of years about trying to do that, and they are more than willing to make that work.
Let's see what, let's see if, oh, Sean Brad, Tracy, and Brian Ford and Ford, uh, see if we can get this thing going, if we did, it would just.
Yeah, I need with Brian on her thing.
Oh, perfect.
All right. And I'll find it very good.
I have it.
Any other comments?
No, but I got a question.
Yeah.
Did y'all do number three, consideration, MLU with Madison County Rescue Squad?
Uh.
Did I miss that? Okay, got it.
God, for notes.
It's a paper note. It's, it's, yeah, it makes sense to me, so.
Madison doesn't like to collect the paper products.
I do, I do. I do any problems.
All right, we do need your question.
Say Japanese?
Yeah.
Don't you, don't you do one? Right? Second?
I'm sorry, sorry, further discussion.